I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Mr. Pellet to call.
I completely, I apologize.
If you're not here, raise your hand.
I got Jesse and I make it so. Well, that's Jason.
Yeah.
Did you say you got some? I've done it twice and I've been out a lot of times.
A separate palette or we can only take one?
I know. And see, we have two additional job sites.
Sorry about that. It was a distraction. All right. Mrs. Fisher. I know she's been working on the election results. She may join us later. Mr. Gayheart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Degner?
Here.
Ms. Gotchak?
Here.
Okay, well, just notate that Ms. Degner, Ms. Gotchak, and Mr. Martel is joining us remotely, or they are joining us remotely, and Ms. Fisher may join us later.
We do have a quorum. We will continue. This meeting has been known as first day statutes. Do we have community participation? Let's see. Mr. Anderson is here. Then we will go to the student recognition of HOZA state leadership.
Yeah. I don't believe we have any. Are there any HOZA members that are online that wanted to review the student presentation? Or I believe they are planning to just have me review that with the board. Let me pull it up. Ms. Gotchak, would you like to?
Yeah, I can read it off if you like.
Okay.
No worries. So unfortunately, as all of you probably are well aware, we were unable to host the state conference, which actually would have been this past week. But they actually took our regional results. And those people will, if you made it in the top three, will continue on to internationals, which is still postponed, but. So Anastasia Gruski, she got outstanding state leader. She is currently our vice president. And she also took first in medical reading. So awesome for her. Um, we have Ben Vogel and Kat Anderson, who took second and third in medical terminology, which I'm just going to point out is extremely hard. So go them. Our next one, we have Ben Vogel again. Oh, sorry. Nope, you're good. Yep, there's Kat. Good for her. Yeah, her first year competing, which is pretty amazing. And we have Kylie, who she took fourth for medical assisting, which is also very hard to do. And she also got a bronze in her service hours. So it depends how many service hours. A lot of our people work at the free clinic, so they help out there a lot. Devin Davy got first in physical therapy. Congrats to him. Our next one, our public health team took first. So that was Yamilah Skyler and then Olivia. So good. They did really good on their skit. They get to do like a five-minute kind of presentation and presented judges based on a theme. So awesome job for them as well. Um, our next one would be me. I took third in photography. So I'll be able to go on to internationals. So pretty exciting. My third time, which several other people had too. Aleah North got fifth for healthy lifestyle. Awesome her. She will maybe be able to make it. And then we had a pretty couple of big groups here. So for biomedical debate, this is our second year competing in it, which is pretty amazing that we took first and second. We have both the Degners. Yay! And the Potters. And in the picture to the left is our people who took first. And they spent a lot of time studying, so we are very happy for them. They did awesome. So both of our teams will make it on for that one. Here's our other team for biomedical debate. Like I said, they did awesome as well. They will continue on internationals. Congrats Kylie to you too. And moving on to our next one, we have creative problem solving, where our team took third, which again, remarkable job that we didn't even compete at states and we made it through regionals, taking so many people. Um, I think there's still a few more, if I'm not mistaken. Yep. Our forensic science, we took second again. We have Molly and Chantel there. They did awesome. This is their third year competing in this, so some time for them. Um, and then we have the HOZA bowl team. So we took first and third, which I'm just going to say these HOZA bowlers are in Ms. Stanky's room every lunch practically, like at least almost every other day. Practicing, studying terms. It's very impressive what they do and how much they commit their time to it. So I applaud them for that. Um, our other HOZA bowlers right here took third again. They did amazing. Congrats to them. They really, they deserve it. They really do. And then we have Dylan. She gets to go to internationals for her HOZA happenings, which is she gets to create like news ledgers like Lever about um, kind of what we do at Elkhorn and different things. And that's also very hard to compete in, and congrats to her. So. I don't know if that's it, but.
I think that's all of them.
Okay, yes, you can tell. I believe Ms. Stanky said, I don't know if we spent pretty much 30 or more than 30 to 40. I don't remember the total number. But are going and qualified for internationals, which is the next runner-up. Um, I don't remember. I think it was some school in Madison only had 15 people. So 30 is quite a bit for us. So congrats Elkhorn HOZA.
Yeah. Only five schools in the entire state had more than 10 qualified. And our next closest competitor was 14. So that's phenomenal work. Congratulations to both of you as well. Kylie, anything you'd like to add?
Um, the internationals, they actually just announced it today that it will be moved to an online format. So I don't know what that's going to consist of, but they're moving it instead of going to Texas this summer.
Well, that's too bad, but I'm sure you guys will represent well and. Yeah, do well moving forward. Thank you very much.
With all the medals and. Yeah, good job. All right, overnight travel request for the baseball team.
Mr. Anzalon, would you like to speak to that?
I would like to speak to that. Thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, this year, uh, the trip was canceled. So we were unable to go. This would have been our fourth year going to Myrtle Beach. And, uh, we are excited about it because this would have been the first year we would have played JV games and varsity games. But the facility has been very accommodating and I would like to request the, uh, ability to go back next year. And next year, the trip would line up with our spring break, uh, which it didn't this year. So we would leave Sunday, March 28th, and we would return Saturday, April 3rd. Same type, same type of thing. We would take JV and we would take a varsity team. We each play four to five games and, um, stay in Myrtle Beach for the week. Any questions?
I would just ask, um, the players who participated this year in the fundraising and then was there a fee that they would pay? So then is it going to roll over and probably reduce the amount each player will have next time?
Yeah, so our, our four seniors will be reimbursed the $225 for the trip.
Okay.
And then the players that are returning have the option of they can be reimbursed their $225 or they could, uh, they could just roll it over into next year. And what the Ripken complex did was give us three options. Option one was you could roll the whole thing over and you wouldn't pay the increase per person next year and you'd be all paid up. Option two, you could get all your money back less a $750 service fee. Option three was you could get your money back, accept the $2,000 deposit and return next year at this year's rate. So yeah, anybody that wants to be paid whole or return their money, that's fine. Uh, the seniors for sure are going to. And if kids want to, go ahead and go and I'll just, or parents say, hey, keep it there for the next year and that we won't have to pay anything. They can do that as well.
Okay. Yeah, as long as that's clear and all that works with them, that's good.
Okay.
Other questions? Otherwise, per policy, we didn't approve this because it is an overnight trip.
I move to approve the overnight travel request for the baseball team as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the overnight travel request from the baseball team as presented. Uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotchak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anzalon.
Um, approval of our school board meeting minutes from March 30th. Those should be attached to your agenda. Any questions on them? Comments? Not hearing any otherwise. Looking for a motion to approve them.
I'll move to approve the minutes of March 30th, 2020, regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the overnight travel request from the baseball team as presented.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotchak? Ms. Gotchak? Are you muted or dropped? Okay, well, but there is a no vote. And Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Truann.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 139617 through 139728, wire transfer 722 through 727, and ACH checks 274 through 290, the combined amount of $236,723.50. And there was a memo providing some additional detail on several of the bills. And you might have noticed some refunds being processed for a number of activities that are being canceled. So we'll be having more of those come through.
Yeah.
Questions, board members?
Uh, I just had one question on the Duffin Phillips. It says, uh, progress payments. So how many, how many payments do we?
Two.
Just two? Okay.
Yeah. So.
That was the only question I had.
Any questions? Not hearing any looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of April 13th, 2020, check numbers 139617 to 139728, wire transfers 722 to 727, and ACH check numbers 274 to 290, in the combined amount of $236,723.50 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of April 13th, 2020, checks numbered 139617 to 139728, wire transfer 722 to 727, and ACH check numbers, uh, 274 to 290, in the combined amount of $236,723.50 as presented.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotchak?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Ms. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Motion carried. Grading guidelines during COVID-19.
Hey. Going to ask Mrs. Bosch to run through the grading guidelines that we'd like to put forward on for board approval for the third trimester in the school district. They're pretty much reflective of what was discussed at the last meeting. And Mrs. Bosch, are you?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Awesome. All right, so after much deliberation and research, we have decided to, um, have students earn pass, no pass, for the third trimester courses for this school year. However, we want to make sure that we give families the option to select a letter grade for the courses during the third trimester. So if a family decides that they want to select the letter grade, they can do so in writing. Um, and that will be just completing a form and, um, getting that either emailed or dropped off at the high school or the middle school office. And then, um, those courses that get the letter grade will, um, be factored into a student's GPA. If a student selects the letter grade, then they will also be able to get their honor points for courses that bear honor points. Otherwise, if they select the pass no pass, which is the default grade, no honor point will be awarded for those courses. I think that sums it up.
Yeah, I think a couple of the differences that I elaborate on from, I think last time we talked about starting with the letter grade, but giving the option to go pass no pass. Um, the team, when they reviewed it, they felt that the majority of the families and/or students would prefer that pass no pass. So that would make it a better default to start with and it would also potentially reduce the stress or anxiety that could be associated with the letter grades. Um, and still, in principle, it gives the same option. It just reverses the order of what that original default is. And the rationale for the, um, earning the honor point only if they earned the letter grade is that a pass is a B minus or above. Um, our board policy for the honor points is a C minus or above. So you would need to, you'd want to have that grade in there in order to distinguish that earning of that honor. The vast majority of students who take those honor point-earning classes earn well above the C minus, so it probably won't, you know, come into factor there. But it still will allow a student to take it as a pass if they prefer. They just wouldn't hang out on it if they want.
I'd also like to add something else, if that's all right, Jason? Yeah, I just want to, um, add the incomplete option as well. We know that there's extenuating circumstances during this time, obviously. And so we want to, um, create that, uh, opportunity for students as well. So students can also select an incomplete and get an extension until August 1st for their courses during the third trimester as well.
Only if they're freshmen, sophomores, or juniors, though, correct?
That's correct, yes. Seniors would not have that option. They have to make a decision actually two weeks, um, before their last day. I believe we decided on, um, May 26th, they'll need to let us know if they don't want to go with the default pass no pass and they would like to select the letter grade.
Will they know their grade before that date?
Yeah, everything is being factored into Skyward, just like we normally would. So they'll be able to see their grade in, in real time. But when, when talking with Lena and having to be able to figure out, um, GPAs before, uh, graduation, this seemed to give enough time, um, for her to be able to make all those adjustments in Skyward and to be able to figure that out.
What happens to the percentage that would normally go for your final? Since there's going to be no finals, like, is that being?
It just.
Or how is that final percentage working?
Nope, it's just not included in the grade then. That's good. I forgot to mention that part two. No finals as well.
To be clear, though, most grades are not final by that May 26th date. So they would have a good idea of where they're at at that point in real time.
Right.
But they would need to, you know, finish out and, yeah, make that determination happen. So there would be for the seniors. There's no way to do it, at least under our current timelines of waiting until the final, final grade is in and then determine pass or no. If we want it factored in for the graduation. But it does give them a lot of time. I mean, really, there's only a little over a week of class, about a week left of the course.
Yes, yes.
And no final exam, too, that would significantly skew where they're at at that.
Jason, I have a question. So the last time we met, you indicated that you felt like the vast majority of universities were, um, accepting transcripts with a pass, passing grade versus a letter grade.
It said that, yeah, we've seen a lot of the colleges and universities that they're expecting to see that on transcripts.
Is that still the case or especially as it relates to UW schools?
Yeah, I think, um, so I haven't seen any trend away from that. I think the model that we're proposing here also reflects the model that UW Madison is following, with the exception that they're defaulting to letter grade, but they're giving all kids the opportunity to do pass or fail. So the vast majority of universities that I've seen, I just have anecdote. I don't have an actual.
Right.
Study in front of me, but I've seen a lot of them flipping to pass, fail. I would say a smaller number doing what UW Madison and/or ourselves are proposing, where they can choose between the two.
Okay.
There's more default to the pass fail.
All right.
So there's going to be a lot of students with the pass fail on their transcript or the pass.
Okay.
So for all the rest, to clarify again, the other three grades, freshmen, sophomore, juniors, they can wait until they see their grade and then decide.
Yeah.
That's how that may be.
Correct. So the other one would be reflective of the middle school, high school credit or mid-middle school.
Right, okay.
And the only reason why we need to do that for the seniors is for that GPA and the ranking of year by graduation.
Right.
Interesting time, Joanne.
Yeah.
And I felt asked to have a formal board motion on it. Either way, since it does tie in or there are deviations from current policies how we have it. So having a formal board motion, I thought would be appropriate.
And I asked officially, I'm going to be asked at home. This is for everyone at the high school. Does options? Are they doing something completely different and are they doing finals?
No, I would, I would expect this to be district-wide. We want it to be consistent district-wide. So I'll follow up with Tricia as well if the board motions this. But I mean, the board, I guess the board could motion it to only be applicable to Elkhorn area high school. But I, I envisioned it being applicable to all, all of the buildings.
Okay.
At a minimum.
Because I know, I mean, yeah, they, they, they haven't been changed.
They're not feeling a difference, yeah.
Correct, but because everything's been virtual already. True.
But they can be.
But they're not letting further student sections and they're not.
So that's why I'm wondering, maintaining a student relationship. They can't be proctored.
And, and it may depend on, for example, this, this is applicable to our students who may be taking a university class or a class through a different provider. They may still maintain a final. So our policy can't dictate to that outside interest.
Sure, there I can be a reply. Okay.
Correct. Uh, Tricia, you're on. What is your feeling in regards to it being applicable to options? I forgot you were on there, sorry.
I suppose.
Tricia, can you, and you?
Sorry about that. It wouldn't.
Did you hear the question, Tricia?
Yes, I did. And, you know, we weren't planning on proctoring in person unless we were back in school, which we don't know that yet. So we hadn't really made a determination about that. But we will go.
This needs to be applicable only to the Elkhorn area high school students? Or would you like this in regards to options as well?
Well, we also have outside vendors as well with courses. So I don't, I don't really have a preference, but I think staying with the district would make the most sense.
I agree. I think keeping it consistent, and that's something, the principal has the authority to input that grade at the end of the day. So even if they're working with an outside vendor who says, okay, this child earned a C, we still, we're the ones who enter in what goes on the Elkhorn transcript. So if that's selected the pass or the no pass, we report it as a pass.
Correct. I'm okay with, with having it consistent with the district.
What's happening with the kids that were doing like work-study programs? With their hours?
Yeah, the state's given guidance because those fall into, uh, state-level programming. So they've modified that. They can do, there's a certain number of hours that they need to complete or they can switch it to an incomplete and have an opportunity to complete that in the summer. There were some other, um, accommodations that were made, but there's obviously a number of kids who they can't go to work.
Right.
Employers aren't working anymore. Uh, but I know they've set up plans to continue it as much as possible, but they can still do some of the study part. And then they've reduced the hour requirement for the work-study portion. And they've given a prolonged timeline, but it would impact some seniors who may not be able to have that completed by the end of the transcript. Sarah, do you have anything to add to that on the work-study?
No, that's all I had heard from Joanna as well.
Other questions?
Just thinking about problems that could arise. Um, work-study program, they've given a letter grade. And an honor point. So if they can't finish before the end of the school year, they can't succeed for it, they're graduating senior.
Then they just wouldn't go in on the transcript at all. Is that your understanding, Sarah, as well?
Yeah, I'm trying to look up, I'm trying to look up what the state sent out just now.
Yeah. It would, and that is a scenario where if the kid was looking at that honor point to boost and so forth, that we couldn't necessarily.
They just added that honor point to that work-study program. They don't want to take it away from them if it's going to be incomplete.
Yeah, we, we do have guidance from the state to follow on that, on how they can complete that course. But I think we can work with the students to make sure that they get completed what they need to. With modification, because they're not going to be able to do the actual work component. I know Joanna's been working with the students. That's something I would have to follow up on. And we could revisit. We still have time. So I could bring back, report at the next board meeting.
Other questions? Good. No one on mine, Paul? Otherwise, uh, oh, good. Paul?
No, I, I'm just, uh, a little bit with my wife at Blackhawk and stuff. No, I, I'm just, uh, a little bit with my wife at Blackhawk and stuff and that August first has a hangup, but I know we have to draw a line somewhere, but not to have to commit to pursuing a grade I, I, until August 1st, that puts the teachers in a rough situation.
Um, they're, they're not committing, um, that would be for the incomplete.
Well, if they, if they can continue pursuing the work to get a grade, that, that, I, I just see what my wife has gone through and that's, it's putting teachers in a precarious situation.
So the, the teachers are paying the students through the end of the year and then when the year finishes, the students will have a grade, they have to respond as to whether they want that grade on the transcript or that whether they want a P on the transcript. But the teachers' work at the end of the year, aside from the handful of incompletes that they may have, uh, will be completed. And then that's up to Lena in that office to work on processing what the student decision is.
So then the students aren't going to have the um, belief or the opportunity to just say, okay, I've got a B plus right now, I'm going to do more work, I'm going to do rework uh, cause I want to get that E, cause it's a weighted course and, you know, I, I just don't want to perpetuate the game against the teachers.
I understand what you're saying, Paul, and you want to speak to that, Sarah?
Yeah, um, the incomplete, we didn't uh, create for that type of a situation, um, the incomplete was created for, for students who might have, I mean, what if a student or a parent, uh, they end up having to take care of small children in their household um, and they can't do the work or something like that, um, that's what we come, that's what we created the incomplete for, um, not necessarily the scenario that you talked about, they would have to apply for the incomplete, it's not something that they would be given automatically.
But it's pretty loose in the, in the description, they have till August 1st to request that.
Um, no, they have till August 1st to complete the work, um, they would have to request it, uh, I think we, they would have to request it, um, by probably by, maybe that's, Paul, maybe that's where we need to tighten it up, maybe we need to say when the um, application to the request for the incomplete needs to happen. Um, I think we can probably make that the same as when students are going to have to request uh, the letter grade who are juniors and um, sophomores and freshmen, which is June 19th, and I don't think I have that on this document, and so maybe I should put that on there.
Yeah, that would make me feel much more comfortable for the teachers.
Okay.
Um, it's unfortunate, it doesn't matter what rule you try to write, somebody always circumvents it.
Sure.
And then that caused, that always caused other problems that manifest into a bigger problem, so if we can project it and maybe cut it off earlier, maybe that would minimize it.
What do you think, should I add just a bullet point underneath the high school specific criteria, would that work?
And I think, yeah, under the high school, because, yeah, the elementary and the middle school are different and it's hard to make one policy that encompasses it all, but if we could be as specific as possible, I think that would be great.
Yep, okay, thank you for the suggestion.
Because I reflect back when I was teaching, I had a young lady who was doing really well um, as a sophomore in IED and it turned into be a weighted class, she was doing the exact same work and she didn't get the weight, well, that caused all kinds of problems and I, these things like that happening here. So if we can circumvent it, that'd be great.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't want to screw with incomplete, just like kids can try to improve their grade and.
Right, right.
You're absolutely right.
And it, it will probably only happen with one or two, but then that manifests into a bigger exposure and more problems.
That's fine, but that, it just, it does say farther up above the grading scale definition if those forms are incomplete, must be returned within 10 days of the end of the trimester and the date.
Oh, yes.
Keep that consistent.
So let's put the date there, does that sound good?
But, but they're really not getting an incomplete there, they're getting a pass, fail unless they're requesting complete.
Correct.
So I think that has to be spelled out for, because parents aren't going to understand that and they're going to see it as a pass, okay, they're doing okay, but then if they look into the grade, so let's just look in, in the clearing that up so everybody truly understands it. Because up above, I, I think you're going to be caught up on, up above the August 1st date is going to stick in their mind because.
Okay, so like that should be at the end and the forms for it should be at the beginning, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because that sticks in my mind is if forms are not returned by, that's by default how it's going to progress then, so somehow we have to do that before and then let them know if you don't, then this is what happens.
Sure.
This to my reading, I, I hope that makes sense, but I don't know.
It, it does.
Okay.
I'm going to have to play with it though when I'm not talking and trying to write at the same time.
No, no, that's fine, I want to try to clarify my perception of it.
Wow.
And that's all it is, is a perception.
Alright, conceptually, no many other questions as from a conceptual standpoint or?
Are we approving this tonight?
That's what I'd like this to approve tonight, we have lots of questions from parents and families that have switched to the pass fail.
Okay, can Sarah just kind of work out it while we go on with meeting and come back to it?
Yeah, we can save all that.
Perfect, I can handle that.
Alright.
Got homework. Important discussion items, student representative report.
Hey, uh, students, anything else you'd like to share in particular? How's the week?
Um, I, oop, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think overall, the online classes at least might have been very successful, um, workload hasn't been too much, I think it's been just the right amount so far and I think teachers are actually doing a great job trying to get us on Zoom classes, playing different games on the internet with each other and I think it's been very successful overall, so appreciate everything you guys have done too to help, so Kylie, do you have anything to add or?
Um, kind of going off of what Rachel said, like, I'd really like to point out like how good our teachers are right now, they're like flexible and like they're asking us our opinion and stuff and that's really cool because they're talking to us about how you think this workload is, um, is this a good time or would you prefer like, if I made it more flexible so you guys could go on later, like, they're communicating with us and I really love that.
They're doing an amazing job, we asked them to basically reinvent education in one week.
Yep, I've heard a lot of comments too is, we're all learning at the same time, but we're all working together and learning well, so that, that's pretty reassuring.
Good. Um, yeah, I, I think the teachers reaching out, the communication, I, I've had a lot of positive feedback and communication in that regard, I know, we also did, um, the directors sent out surveys this past week to the families to gauge what their experience is, how they felt about the workload and, you know, things that we could do to improve, so we're seeking input there as well and, um, you know, I know, you know, there's families that uh, obviously have a struggle with it and
Sure.
will have challenges, but overall, we're, we're hearing a lot of positive and we're working with those families that do have the challenges, um, you know, as best we can and, um, really happy to say that we've, um, really addressed the internet access um, issue, we're ahead of the game on that, we did get our second supply of um, hotspots which are really just going out to fill the handful of pockets where their internet access wasn't terribly stable, so it's not, um, it's not that we have individuals that we're aware of that don't have access out there, it's trying to improve the access of the internet, so those came in today and I know Mr. Jericho was on top of that.
That's the food service one.
Uh, the food service, I'll share the announcements, but yeah, no, that's alright, that's going, it's going for the kids taking foods, they still have to cook, which is a wonderful thing. Oh, food class, yeah. Alright. Um, yeah, all that talk, I have a little important.
Okay, sorry.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
Director's report and Strand, are you still on?
I am still on, thank you. I might look like the varsity baseball coach, but I'm really the community engagement coordinator. So, uh, yeah, just wanted to share, um, one of the partnerships, relationships that I feel is, um, really evolving or has evolved and continues to evolve and I think it's a positive for the city of Elkhorn Rec as well as the school district. Uh, Carl and Alyssa have been with the recreation department about a year and a half, so they're fairly new, they came from outside of the community. Rachel has been with the rec department for about six years now, but uh, yeah, Carl and Alyssa brought in some amazing ideas and have been, uh, been really good to work with and I just wanted to share some of that with you. Um, so I am a part of the park and rec board, have been for probably the last, oh, a little over a year, which has been, um, really good, not from, not from just the park and rec perspective, but from the perspective of keeping in touch with the city of Elkhorn and what's going on and kind of some of the things that are there doing and evolving. And, um, as well as, um, the park and rec and school district, we've really worked hard to assist each other with sharing appropriate things in each other's guides or each other's media, um, knowing that we're in this for the same audience, we want to help the same people, we want to provide for the community as a whole and we felt making sure we did that together and we weren't working against each other or, or competing with like programs. So, uh, yeah, that's been kind of another thing that's evolved. One of those things was no school day adventures, which has been growing. When we talked, um, we talked about Carl presenting, he said, well, what can, what can we do, you know, to help the school and help kids and what's something that maybe we don't do now, and so as, as the conversation continued, um, came up with this no school days, so activities for kids on those in-service days when maybe parents are still working and the kids are looking for something positive to do. With that, um, a lot of this, the no school day, um, activities are scheduled to be outside, maybe at a zoo or a park or something like that, but what we were able to do is have, always have that backup plan of if there's adverse weather or something gets canceled, we can, uh, we can still host the no school day, but we'll host it through our facilities and our schools and, uh, they've had to do that a couple of times, but, uh, yeah, the, interest is growing on that and that's been a good thing. Uh, we've spent some time updating the facility use agreement, which all of you have seen months ago, um, indoor games during adverse weather, this was uh, fun where team ball games, coach pitch games, uh, flag football games for the youth in the past that had to be canceled, um, we have now moved indoors into the agility center and been able to have a couple of games going at a time and, uh, kids love it, parents love it, it's, it's fun to watch them, uh, yeah, think they're a big deal running around inside and still being able to play. Summer camps, we've been able to, uh, to work on what can we do again if there's adverse weather or maybe they want to do something different, uh, last summer, we were showing movies in the auditorium for the, the summer day camps, they were using the swimming pool, the agility center, the gyms, um, sometimes as just alternative activities, sometimes as activities for, uh, when they had bad weather. And then the winter activities and camps, uh, it's fun to see, our students are the ones running those and they can use of our facilities and, and they're the ones taking the initiative and getting that experience and teaching kids from things that they've learned. And just a few of those that run during the winter or have run already this past winter with the swim lessons, gymnastics, baseball, soccer, um, I don't know if any of you know about blast ball? Blast for the kids, but that base that honks, everybody wants to jump on it and, uh, yeah, they should take, out of that for a while. Um, yep, we can flip through. Facility use, um, we've, yeah, rec's been able to, uh, begin to provide adult recreation leagues and, um, we've also, well, we had a schedule for the rec teams to, uh, be able to practice early spring and use the agility center and some of the resources there, but uh, unfortunately, that's on hold for now. Some of those rec programs that they began, that they started were the, uh, coed adult volleyball league, there was a winter league and going to be a spring league and then ultimate frisbee out by the new maintenance building and that open field there, they just meet up on Sundays and then hopefully we will continue with the adult soccer leagues for this coming summer. School support, um, this past day of action, we were able to work with the city as a whole, not just the rec and we had some, some jobs and some activities that were in the city of Elkhorn, I know a group of kids went to Tash Park and mulched all the, uh, the landscaping berms out there, we had another group that went downtown and swept the streets and picked up garbage. And I think there was a real sense of pride in our kids doing those things in our community and there was a real ownership of like, hey, this is great, look, we're doing things that we, we're going to see and people are going to drive by in our town every day. Uh, the city, the rec department also provided a message for every one of the meals for the meal program during that first week, is kind of a positive message, done a little coloring sheet, you'll see that on the right side, um, as a gesture or something just to go along with that meal program. They're continuing to employ students as lifeguards, camp advisors, coaches, referees, umpires, um, pool staff, which they like, um, that they get local kids that want to work, um, within the city. And then we had a conversation, um, about, you know, what can they do for those kids that, for families maybe can't afford sometimes those fees for camps and they came up with a scholarship program and were kind of used that same criteria that we use for maybe free and reduced lunches in order for families not use that information, but a similar model so that, uh, they can give people a break that maybe need that break so the kids can still participate. And on the lower left there, Carl, he even showed up to shovel, shovel the soccer field, it was sectional time and we wanted to make sure we were going to host. And then the last thing is, uh, we work together, putting together an Elkhorn strong shirt to, uh, show community pride, um, in a partnership with us and the, uh, the rec department. So yeah, that's kind of a quick snapshot of some of the things that, uh, that I've been working with the rec department on and it's been a great relationship and, uh, and one that I think benefited both of us.
You want?
Thanks, John, for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Recommendation to district administrator personnel?
Yeah, um, thanks again, Mr. Angelo, and I just want to add, it's, it's been really neat to see with the incorporation of position, how much more we've been able to integrate into the community and get our facilities, you know, really used as a community-based resource and asset. Um, John's done a great job networking and interfacing with those groups and, um, I really appreciate all of his work and efforts there, so thank you, John.
Thank you, could I add one more thing, Jason, quickly?
Uh, sure.
Could I, I'd like to ask the board, if you would, if you'd take a minute later or in the days to come and send me an email, I'd like to know your perspective on like, what community engagement looks like to you during a time like this? If you have some time and you want to send me an email, what community engagement looks like to you or what you think it should look like or, or an idea, um, in a time like this?
Alright, our personnel sheet, we have a number of retirement requests that came in between, um, last board meeting and now. First up, Mr. and Mrs. Mary and Patricia Butters, both submitted their, um, request to retire, at the end of the 2019, 2020 school year. at the end of the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Butters has served a combined total of 21 years with the school district, and Mrs. Butters a combined total of 16 years with the school district. And then we have Laura Whatke, who has served as a teaching assistant, sort of retiring after 29 years of service. And then Ellen Luthen, we want to recognize her, she served as an English teacher. She won't be returning for the 2020-2021 school year, because she took a position up north. And then Mrs. Bermanster will not be returning for the 2020-2021 school year. I want to thank them for all of their service to the school.
Do you require a motion to approve our personnel sheet?
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for April 13th, 2020, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, moving second to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for April 13th, 2020, is presented. Roll call both, please.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mr. Dayhard? Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Motion carried, school gifts?
Once, yeah, I have no gifts to present this evening. And then we have the several major meetings.
The buildings and ground committee met last Monday and reviewed the proposed projects for this summer or this coming school year for maintenance needs. And if you just kind of scroll down to the middle, Jason, they're in the blue section, you'll see a number, I think, 1 through 14, which kind of represent, I'll call it our base projects that we're looking at doing this year under the, the current allocation that we have within our existing budget. So, the major project we're looking at is redoing the roof at the high school and pool area, and that's probably the largest project, so we've been working with IRS as our consultant. Already have the bid results on that, just to kind of block up a contractor. The other major projects is looking at refinishing the gym floors, middle school and Jackson. Middle school hasn't been done since that was built, and Jackson, no one remembers the last time Jackson was actually retired, so it's been quite a while. So, those are probably the major projects. Looking at continuing to do some painting, looking at doing some crack filling. You'll see removing some bleachers at West Side because that's the, used to be the old gym, and they don't really use it for that purpose anymore because it's more the cafeteria, so it just gives a little more flexibility. And then there's some HVAC work at the high school, and I think also then at the middle school, looking at reconfiguring like the, what used to be the computer labs, taking out that module furniture to open that up to give more flexibility for other instructional purposes. So, that's really the, the base project, which represents about the allocation we have in our existing kind of well-forward budget. We also started to work on the possibility, if a referendum was approved, what other projects would we do? In reality, we probably still need to spend a little more time on that portion. So, we're not really asking approval on the second portion, which is like 15 through 26, but really just the first portion, which is the 1 through 14 this evening.
Questions?
I move to approve the 2020 maintenance projects, items 1 through 14, as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So, moving to second to approve the 2020 maintenance projects, 1 through 14 is presented. Roll call both, please.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mr. Dayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes. We should probably go back. Ms. Bosch, are you done with the?
I am ready and set to go. I made changes to the paragraph that we had talked about that I'm highlighting right here. So, I'll give you a second to just go ahead and reread.
I think, do we, can we just delete that sentence, Sarah?
Which one?
The one that I, you don't see the highlight?
No, I don't. Why, why wouldn't I see a highlight that you make? Oh, there, okay. Yeah, if you feel like we don't need to have that in there. We thought we wanted to get that spelled out right away in there, in case people missed that and didn't read it in the bullets, but if you think it'll be okay, we can take it out.
I think you need to still say that no credit will be earned for no pass. It's, it's under the grading scale definition.
Oh, okay, will be earned, okay.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden, so that's why we thought we should spell it out up there in writing.
There's nothing wrong with. Yeah, right.
Any other questions or?
Sarah, you found on here that there's no finals. What about the civics test?
Oh, yeah.
By, the state is still requiring us to take the civics test, sorry. They're doing that because we just do it online. I wish personally that they would have decided to, well, never mind. Anyway, we still have to take it.
When it says no finals exams will be given, except the civics test.
Yeah, the civics test isn't really a part of a.
No, it's not.
Class or grade, but we could.
It's a required.
Still put a bullet point, the senior special instructions, we maybe enter there.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Still required to have a passing grade on the civics exam.
Yep.
Prior to graduation.
That's a good idea. And I guess my other question, Sarah, is do we want to put anything on here about AP testing? What the state's doing about that?
That's still kind of up in the air, so I don't know that we should make anything explicit in here as far as AP testing goes. And we don't require them to take the test for graduation or to earn any credit, so I don't know if we necessarily need to include that in this document.
Okay.
And this would be accompanied by a video presentation explaining it, but I'm sure there will still be people that won't understand or that will have questions, so we'll make sure to get them to contact their school counselor or feature if they have questions.
I added some language about the civics exam, does that look all right under the senior special instructions?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
I want to put prior to graduation.
Oh, okay.
They literally give you all the questions to that exam and all the answers on the DPA.
Right.
And it's an online test.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that one's a lot for me to handle. Poor Mr. Brown, poor Mr. Brown.
All right. Any other questions on that?
No, thanks for making those changes.
Now, thank you guys for all your suggestions, we appreciate it.
Anything else? I hear anything, do you have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the grading guidelines during COVID-19 digital learning for trimester three of the 2019-2020 school year as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, moving to second to approve the grading guidelines during COVID-19 digital learning for trimester three of the 2019-2020 school year as modified. Roll call both.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mr. Dayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Announcements?
Hey, we have a number of announcements. Mrs. Ingersoll sent me a question, which was a very good question. WASB had sent out an email request encouraging board members to write to legislators in regards to the CARES funding or how that could be applied or additional stimulus funding as a result of COVID-19. I felt in, you know, reviewing the request and what I could share with you from our local district perspective as of right now, the monies that have been set aside for schools to utilize, we're estimating our portion to be around $200,000. And to this point, and what we're projecting through the end of the school year, we don't project to have any incurred expenses greater than the amount that was issued for, through the original CARES Act. Now, what that looks like, we are anticipating going into next year, you know, depending on what the state does with school budgets and so forth, but that very well could change. But there's a lot of districts in very different positions because we have the technology access, because we have a lot of the equipment already in place. We're able to provide special education services and work with the students in a fashion that meets the requirements needed. Not all districts are in that same situation. I have family and some of them who live out of state, but where their family is giving one Chromebook and said, "This is what you get to use," and they might have five or six kids in the household. And they say, you know, "Good luck." So, there, that creates a lot of inequity and issues and concerns related to special education services where the district would need to go and get more equipment, more staffing potential. So, we're at this point not exceeding what was the issue. So, I would have a hard time indicating to any of you, yes, this would be a great item to lobby for other than flexibility. Anytime we're given flexibility in how to utilize those monies, that helps because there are certain areas that we may have a need for the expense that may not be special education. And if they, so far, it's been pretty open-ended that we can utilize it outside of the regular federal guidelines for title funds. So, that's what I'll continue to ask for lobbying for. I thought that was a good question. You can look at that request there if you want. COVID-19 updates, I put a couple links here. There's the county website I shared with the team this morning because it, I don't know when our state will look to begin the reopening process, but you see that there's a lot of that national dialogue as depending on the location, people feel that they're at that crest of the needs. They feel like things are in better place to handle the illnesses as it comes up. And schools will be a centerpiece to probably many states' plans to reopen the economy. So, I did share with you, here's the Walworth County Alert Center. If you're interested in what's going on with the COVID cases in Walworth County. This morning when we looked, the last numbers were from April 8th, and it was at 26. They updated that today, you know, through over the weekend, and it was at a total of 45 cases that have been identified in the county. And then I'll also share with you the number that have been, they've overcome the illness and how many are, I think there's six in the hospital right now from it. So, they will track that from a Walworth County perspective, we're keeping an eye on that as well. But likely, well, whatever we do, I would recommend that we do it in a coordinated fashion with the guy that's from the state and/or the county. It doesn't make any sense in my mind to get out there ahead of those other agencies. I'm not making that decision. So, people will still ask me, are we going to come back, you know, to school yet this year? I'm holding out hope that there'll be a process and a plan that we can. I don't know, we haven't been told no. So, keep working in that direction. That same thing applies for summer school, if that conversation's going to be canceled. Summer school, I don't see a point in canceling summer school before, you know, the regular school year. So, I, there's time, I know that people may need to, you know, they won't be able to have those plans concrete eight weeks out in advance, but I think people are getting more used to that in this current time, as things continue to change. The district resource page, I included that link there. We do house everything within that district resource page. Mr. Anzler, one of the things that he's working with in his team is the family need identification. I looked today, there are over 108 different need identifications on there that I know that team of social workers, Mr. Anzler, and volunteers have helped serve and meet those varying needs, so we really appreciate that. And Mr. Dricken, the technology support link, they've done a wonderful job of getting that internet access out, running a hot swap situation. I know my wife was thoroughly impressed when, you know, one of my kids had to do a hot swap, and I didn't even see anybody. I came, it's located at the front door, they pick it up and they, they go. So, they've got a great process there. And then the food service, I'll go ahead and roll into that next. Our last, the Thursday before we went to break, we served 900 students and 294 adults, which is at that, it's kind of stabilizing or plateauing a little bit on what those numbers are, which is approximately 2,400 meals a day between the breakfast and the lunch. We had, I know we didn't have any school gifts listed through the traditional format, but the Elkhorn Area School District Foundation pledged $6,000 towards that funding plus any additional donations that were received to help support this initiative. And I looked at it this morning, it was over $3,600 additional donations just through that source. I hope I'm not getting out too far ahead, but the Booster Club also pledged $5,000 to help with the adult meal service, so. And I know Mr. Anzler mentioned the T-shirt, where half those proceeds will go to help supporting that. So, that's been, you know, it, it's been great to see the support out there and the efficiency of which we can deliver that food. The food costs are averaging less than $2 a night between the breakfast and the lunch. So, it's, it's a big help to the families and who are able to participate in it. We have lots of stories of, you know, parents driving through literally in tears, you know, able to get the food. You know, there's people who are out of jobs, out of work, or less income coming in, and it helps with that, yeah. The, we do have a policy committee meeting need. And we'll have to look and see, we can certainly do that virtually, or we can do it spread out in a room here. But Jody wanted me to check and see if next Monday would work around that lunch hour timeframe for the policy committee members.
Our date noon?
Yeah, let's just, is that okay? Monday, let's see, that's April 20th, right?
Yeah.
All right, we'll send out a calendar invite, you can join either virtually or face-to-face. There's some HR things that we need to get rolling on as a result of the COVID and guidance related to that, that we need to update in some of the handbooks and stuff. Referendum results. I want to publicly thank the community for the support of the referendums. Is it still 11 of 12?
Yes, it's 11 of 12.
There, now it's official, right?
It's eleven of twelve still.
All right, come on, Tom, I'm gonna beat you up. Um, but it's pretty close, they don't have, there's, there's, um, not a large enough voting group in there that would sway the results either way. So I want to give a big thanks to the Elkhorn Area School District community for supporting both referendum questions they passed at approximately a sixty percent, um, clip and want to congratulate, um, Jay Ray and Paul Martel, um, for being reelected to the school board as well.
Who got fifty-eight write-in votes? That was funny.
Pretty Mickey Mouse, but some other.
I'll see that.
You will, yeah.
All right.
You have to tally every single one.
Um, hey, and then I wanted to make the board aware because we didn't get these, we just finalized these interviews, um, prior to the board agenda's going out, but, um, two individuals that we have extended the job offers to for the ag position is Bailey Hart and then Mike Dahl, uh, for the business position. Bailey will be the new ag teacher, which is an expansion within that program. And Mike Dahl will be, um, replacing Dana Anderson, who retired. So I included a link to their resumes if you want to get to know them, but I wanted you guys to hear it for me before, you know, their posts on social media, um, and so forth. Bailey, uh, currently teaches up, um, north by Thorpe, um, she has a couple of years under her belt. And, uh, Mike Dahl was at Arrowhead, um, Heartland Arrowhead, and then he went to, um, private industry for a year and, realized that, yeah, he really wants to be in education, so, um, he'll be a welcome addition to the team as well. And he actually is the president of the esports.
Oh.
Um, for the state of Wisconsin. Um, so it's nice to have another person there to help with Mr. Isroff, because that club has grown to a huge students. I mean, it's one of our largest teams that we have in the, the district, um, that esports team. And then, um, canvassing will take place Thursday morning, seven o'clock. Um, it's an in-person only meeting, but it is a public meeting. And, uh, that will be held here. We're making it ten-person only, um, at the recommendation of the, uh, because legally people have to be able to expect their voting records and just logistically trying to be able to show online around online option to that, doesn't make a lot of sense. So that will be, uh, on Thursday and that's all I have for the day.
We do have a closed session. This evening, so looking for a motion to adjourn the closed session.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we adjourn it to a closed session for, for two Wisconsin State statutes nineteen eighty-five. Parent one, parent C, to discuss employment contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moving to second to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, to discuss employment contracts. The school board will now reconvene in open session. Roll call vote please.
Right, Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Egersol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.